To call the Select Board meeting to order for Monday, December 4th, 2023. And note that we will be going into executive session. Do you want to make?
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Select Board enter into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Harwich Employees Association, as well as pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions. And the Chair has determined that open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position, Harwich Employees Association, as well as pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, 62 Route 28 West Harwich.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Just to note that we will return by 6:00 PM. A roll call vote, Michael?
Aye.
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 An aye. Board of Selectmen, a meeting to order for Monday, December 4th, 2023. We're just returning from-
Excuse us.
Excuse me. If you're going to have separate conversations, you have to step outside. Thank you. We're returning from executive session, in which we had some action on item A to approve, and on B, we are moving forward on further discussion, and C, we took no action. So if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
The symbol of the United States of America, and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for all.
I want to point out that, as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the Chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, and having already done the Pledge of Allegiance, I will move to public comments and announcements. Cindy.
Good evening, Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. I had a long speech prepared. I'm going to bring it back next week. You guys have a long night. But I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that came out for this weekend throughout the town. I have many people to thank, and just anyone that did come through Harwich Center on Saturday, I hope you enjoyed what we did, and I'll be back next week.
Great. Thank you, Cindy, and it was a fabulous weekend. Thanks for all your hard work.
Madam Chair, if I may, about a round of applause for Cindy Williams for all she did.
Anybody else for public comment? Good evening.
Yes, Lieutenant Brad Willis from the Fire Department. Cindy told me to keep it short, so I will. Just here to remind everybody about the Ninth Annual Homeless for the Holidays here in Harwich, coming up this week, starting on Wednesday, the ninth, excuse me, Wednesday the 6th, running through Sunday, the 10th. Be in Brooks Park, just like every year, collecting new unwrapped toys for the family pantry and Toys for Tots, also monetary donations and non-perishable food items for the family pantry as well. Just real quick to give everybody numbers from last year, actually from our eight years prior, we've collected 8,267 toys, almost 14,000 pounds of food, and just shy of $65,000 in cash and gift card donations. So looking forward to another successful year. Thanks to everybody in the town who supports the great program. On behalf of all the men and women of the police and the Fire Department, I thank everybody for their support, so looking forward to another good year. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. Thank you for such a great event.
Hi, my name is Lorraine Murphy, 43 Red Pond Drive, and I fell getting into your building just now. Somebody had to help me up. You can see my shoes and my thing. And I thought I followed the arrows. I mean, there is just not enough holes or information out there, and there must be something better to be right during this construction. I had no idea it was happening. I guess it's common knowledge, but I fell. And I'm lucky I didn't break my arm, and the ambulance didn't take me away, the Fire Department ambulance. And so-
Thank you for-
Something needs to be done.
Thank you for letting us know that. We will have to improve the lighting. Anybody else for public comment and announcement?
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
There was a second person also that fell out there while I was coming in, so-
Really? Okay, so-
Seems to be on this corner where the ditch is.
Okay.
Just an extra light or something.
Yeah, we need some, yeah, some lighting out there.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hi, Carolyn.
Thank you, Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. Last week, I made an announcement of several programs. I mistakenly said that we were having the winter solstice on Friday, December 22nd. The actual date is Thursday, December 21st, and we have changed all of the publicity. I apologize, so, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anybody else for public comment and announcement?
Good evening, everybody. Patrick Otten, East Harwich. I have comments to make on several of the agenda items. Will you allow public comment when those items are being discussed, or do I need to do it now?
What are those items that you're looking to?
Number one, and number two, the special vote and the electronic voting.
You can give us your comments on the special election now, because we're not going to be taking public comment.
Okay. Can I start then with the special election then?
Yeah, that's what I said, yeah.
So, you know, you had a resignation October 25th, which left a vacancy for the Select Board. I felt important to have full representation by five members on the board representing the residents of Harwich, so I did pursue the objective of having a special election, hoping that it would be done in January. That's off the table, obviously, given the, given the calendar, given the busyness, given how everyone, you know, it's just too much to do. I would really prefer that the now proposed date of April 9th simply be delayed until the normal election, May 21st happens, and just hold the election then, nullifying this whole request, this whole business of having a special election. So that's the-
I'm going to stop you there, because based on all our information from our town clerk-
Yep.
We, based on your petition, we have to move forward with a special election prior to the next election. And Emily, if I've got anything incorrect, you can correct me, but unfortunately, that's the position we're now in.
I just wondered if that can be withdrawn and simply be given the, you know, we're not going to get six months' representation, we're going to get six weeks.
Right, and we did talk about this at public meetings, about the fact that, you know, having a special election would put us in a precarious position. Actually, our town clerk went to great lengths on multiple meetings to explain the impact to the primary, the presidential primary, et cetera, with the hope that people would understand the impact and the cost to the taxpayers to hold the special election. So now here we are, and now we have to take action.
I wish all that was done before November 14th. This information, to me, is new now, so-
Well, they were at public meetings, at our meetings since Mary Anderson's resignation, so.
Well, then I apologize. May I comment on the second agenda item, which is electronic voting?
You can comment, and then, because we're not going to be taking public comment on that.
Okay. How many registered Harwich voters have you discussed electronic voting? Have you gone out publicly and asked how many people would favor it? Imagine, 200 residents attending this meeting. Can you, can someone assist me?
And Patrick, I'm just going to ask you not to take too long, because we do have a full agenda and a joint meeting, so.
And imagine, can you hold it out? Imagine 200 residents. Here they are. These are people that would, these are all registered Harwich voters, they all would like to have electronic voting. Why? Because it's efficient, it's fast, it is accurate, and it's private. Okay? So if you'd like a copy of 200 signatures, I'd be happy to give this to you.
That's fine, you can give them to us.
Very few had no opinion on the issue. A couple said they wanted to actually see how their neighbors voted. However, voting has always been private. Every election I've ever been in has been private. So electronic voting is fast, efficient, accurate, and private. Orleans has it, Chatham has it, Eastham has it, 70 other Massachusetts towns have it. The Mass, Massachusetts and Federal Legislature also use electronic voting. So how many towns have you talked with? I forward you the comments from the town administrators in Chatham. Highly favorable, highly wanting it, no complaints. I forward you the comments from Orleans. Why? Because it provides quick, accurate, and private votes. Cost depends. Cost, by the way, is 1, 1, 1, well, .03% of the annual budget. So I may say an X amount of dollars, but in reality, what is that amount of dollars in the total capital budget of the town? .03%. So when you're asking me how much does it cost, I'm going to say .03%. Okay? Effectiveness, very effective. Benefits, quick, accurate, private, can speed up town meetings. Orleans did a lot of counting votes that had multiple secret votes. They were very time-consuming. Problems, none. Eastham.
So, Patrick, if you can, we're aware of all the other surrounding towns that have it, it's fairly-
I don't know whether or not you've spoken to the other towns.
We actually have spoken about this, and I-
I forward this to you, so perhaps-
I think that you, excuse me.
Excuse me?
I think that you also know that Mary Anderson made a comment as part of this board-
Yep.
About electronic voting. So the board has had a conversation about this, again, at a public meeting.
Right.
So I'm just going to ask you to wrap it up, because we do have a lengthy agenda, and we do have that on our agenda to discuss.
And here I am to discuss it with you, because I'm not allowed to speak during a meeting. Mary Anderson said that it was fraught with, with hacking and fraud. That's not true. These are closed systems. So I will conclude simply by saying, you have the information I forwarded to you, you have the information and the study that Chatham did, the nine-page report that Chatham did to evaluate electronic voting. Hopefully, you read that, because I forwarded it to you. All I'm doing now is asking that electronic voting be considered and be used here in Harwich. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, and we put it on the agenda to have that discussion. Jeff? Oh, sure.
There will be no office hours for the Select Board in the month of December. It's just a bit busy of a month, so I'm going to push until January, and I will get you that date as soon as I secure it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes.
So we'll move on to the consent agenda?
Can you split the minutes? Because I'm going to-
Split the minute.
I'm going to abstain from one of them.
Okay.
Yeah, I can split them, of course. Madam Chair, thank you. I move that we approve the Select Board minute, meeting minutes for November 20th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. For oh.
I move that we approve the Select Board meeting minutes for November 27th, 2023, with one correction. Amy Uzowski's name, I think on page two, is spelled incorrectly.
And I think that is also the one where there's the incorrect reference to Hark. It should be to Hark, not Gulf.
Do you want to hold those minutes? Want to hold them?
Sure. We'll hold those. All right.
I move that we vote to rescind the reappointment of Ron Solmir as Shellfish Constable for the town of Harwich.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
For oh. Now we'll move to our joint meeting on the fiscal year 2025 to 2029 Capital Outlay Plan and fiscal year 2025 Capital Budget, with Select Board, Capital Outlay Committee, and the Finance Committee. So, Peter?
Do we are posted, so all the finance meetings?
Thank you.
I'd like to call the Capital Outlay Committee meeting stock.
Okay. All set, and we'll just go ahead into the capital plan?
If I may, Madam Chair. Thank you. First of all, thank you to you and the Select Board, to your colleagues on Finance Committee, and to the folks to my left on the Capital Outlay Committee. I'm thrilled that we're able to do this this evening, the first business meeting in December. As you may know, the Charter requires that there is a joint meeting of this nature sometime in December to go over the capital plan. To that end, the Capital Outlay Committee, under the leadership of Rich Larios and the six members, met several times, starting in September. They had presentations by department heads on October 18th, November 3rd, November 9th, November 17th. They had a final meeting on November 28th. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend that particular meeting. But what you have in front of you on the 11-by-17 document is the draft Capital Outlay Plan for fiscal years 2025 through '29, the five-year plan, and we will be discussing parameters of the fiscal year 2025 budget, which would be how we're going to fund the first year of the plan at the next year's town meeting. So with that, I'd open it up to you and the boards for any comments, questions, and discussion.
Great, thanks. I'll go to you, Peter, if you want to.
Yeah, there's not going to be a presentation?
Do you-
Okay, all right, that's fine. We'll just go, we'll just go through it. I'll start with a couple, couple things. One is, as you rightly said, Joe, I think we'll expect sometime in January whatever potential source of funding for these in the, you know, the first year.
I'll be able to speak to it tonight as well, just not in complete specificity. I think you know that free cash will be, is hoped to be certified in January or February.
Right. We don't want the numbers yet, so.
Yep.
Yeah. And by the way, it would be helpful if we inserted either in this or as a separate document for FY 2025, next to each one, what the funding source is. It would just be helpful.
So I was planning on doing what I did last year, a second full page.
In case I use the mic.
I have to believe my Irish whispers carry.
There you go.
The appendix C will be the page that you see, and a second page that outlines the funding, and also, as we did in the last year, each of the articles that will be dedicated by funding source will have that outlined as well. So there'd be several iterations throughout the warrant that talk about the funding.
Yeah, okay. One item in particular, under the facilities maintenance, that caught my attention, and that's the generator at the harbor, is I read the supporting document. It sounded like the justification was because we have pipes that potentially freeze under the building. I'm assuming those pipes today have some kind of heat tracing on them, and I can't imagine the heat tracing is more than a couple of kilowatts. It seems like a very expensive generator, unless you're expanding the scope of it to really mean we're going to run the whole complex with this generator. So I just don't know, and I would ask if there was any consideration to putting up a few solar panels, get a couple of Powerwall batteries, and use that to run the potential heat tracing for a couple of days instead of a generator, unless we need it for the whole facility, and I don't know the answer to that. So just a question.
I can certainly respond.
The, the issue is to do the, the complex itself, meaning the building and, and the, and the piping. I'd like to tell the audience that the Capital Outlay Committee is made up of six people, of which two sit on the Finance Committee. So we're sort of split up, and what we're looking at with Mr. Hughes is one request by Facility Maintenance to add a generator to the harbor, Harbor Master's building. If you were in the back, just to introduce, this long sheet that you're looking at has almost 40 requests on it. We have a packet of information of the 40 requests, and that's what generates the numbers that you see for '25. So one of the requests was from the Harbor Master. We, in fact, did quote-unquote "a site visit" to the harbor, of which the members of Capital Outlay went and saw what the request was physically. Along with that, there are other requests from the Harbor Master. So there's been a lot of discussion about what that generator, you're 100% be correct. There's questions on what that generator will do and the cost of the generator. The good thing is that this document that we're looking at is still subject to change as we go forward before town meeting. So if there are issues, we could, we just don't go away. It's, it's still an issue we can look at.
So if I could interpret that, just to something else, and that would be, I'm assuming, that we will have bid prices on all these things before we get to town meeting.
Well, the question is bid prices. If we're leaving it up to the facilities manager to get the bid prices, that's his job, not ours. And our job is to see if the relevant request is a good request, how, how's the funding going to be, and that's, that's the next step. We don't, we're not going to tell the person that put this together, we have better information than you do. That's, that's not our job.
Yeah, I mean, to me, the best information is getting bid prices, so.
Well-
Yeah.
That's fine.
And I would say that the facilities manager, that, that's what he's getting paid for.
Sure, sure.
That's right, yeah. I, I think that's a, a fair statement, Rich, and we depend on our professionals to be able to-
Correct, right.
Bring us what they need and give us the information that we need to digest to figure out what the cost should be. Joe?
Just further, I want to be clear. I heard the word "complex." For me, "complex" talks about the entire harbor operation. That is not what the generator is looking for. This is a whole-building generator, so it's for the Harbor Master Building and all of the environs within that. It's not merely to keep the heat on, it's also all of their communication equipment. So it's multi-purpose generator, whole building, but not entire complex.
Thank you, Joe.
I understand. I'd be interested in what is, well, at some point, I'd be interested in what the rating of the generator is. It just seems like a lot of generated.
Hold on, Peter, Michael had a question.
Just to expand on both your comments, Rich's comments, and Peter's ask, you know, we're still looking at a procurement list as of two weeks ago, with 24 uninitiated projects, and, and a large portion of those are DBW projects, and there's a fair amount on here for DBW. I know we're not going to tackle this tonight, but it would be great to have a more in-depth conversation of when and how we're going to get out of our backlog before we're asked to approve a lot more projects this year. And I do think bid price and going to town meeting would make more sense than anything else. I'm just not sure it's possible, and I'd like to hear from administration and staff on their asks on if it's possible. And to expand on that, for the administrator, when can the board expect suggestions on reappropriations for a lot more of the procurements that have open-ended balances? Will that be as part of the conversation on funding sources, as you pointed out in the new articles?
So repurposing, as I understand the way you may be using the phrase-
Reappropriation.
Thank you. Is something that we do as a team, both administration, finance, and the department heads, when we're looking for funding for anything? So we certainly have an element of that for the Capital Outlay Plan, but also for any other articles that may require funding. So that's always something that we analyze and something that we track, and that's no different this year.
Thank you, Joe.
Not for this evening, sorry, Madam Chair, but not for this evening, per se. My understanding for this evening was to present publicly through the three bodies where we are at with the draft capital plan.
Right. Could I keep going?
Yep, go ahead, Peter.
So the 204 System Road roof, the only thing that caught my attention there was, last year, I seem to remember in the, in the supporting material, we were talking about potentially a slate roof replacement, because it's a slate roof now, and then what I read in the packet, it sounds like we're going to an asphalt roof?
That's the expectation, correct.
Okay, it seems to me to be a price difference in that, but I don't, this number's the same as it was last year. So I would expect the number to go down. I would. I mean, again, it would be up to a bid price, but I know slate and working with slate is a lot more expensive than putting up asphalt roofs. So I would expect to see some movement in that, unless something, there's some crazy inflation thing or something.
Well, if I could speak to the overall concept of where the pricing came from, I believe in every instance, the advocates did seek pricing not through a formal bid process, but through appropriate procurement channels. So they were doing that through the late summer, early fall, and I've asked them that if they're aware of any significant changes to the pricing to alert me. But these are based on professional estimates and relying upon the marketplace that exists today.
Okay, and then if we can move down to the irrigation system at Creamery Valley, it looks like that doubled in price from last year. Is that an expansion of the intent of what to do? Like how many holes, or is that just a price escalation?
That's a price escalation purely from year over year. It's the same project. That's the reality of the marketplace.
Yikes. Okay, so when we're dealing with reality of the marketplace, do we have, or will we get an opinion from bond counsel as to what the, the cost of money will be over the next couple of years? Because right now, I see fairly high, and some of these things, it may make more sense to delay them a year or two until prices come down, not prices, but the cost of capital comes down, if we have to borrow. Just a question and observation. So with that, you want to just keep going down?
Can I?
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Rich.
To go along with that, the irrigation system, okay? You're talking about an asset for Harwich that the revenue stream funds that capital outlay, okay? It's not the town, per se. And the, the fact of inflation is almost covered by the possibility of increasing fees. Okay, I'm not saying that they're going to, I have nothing to do with the golf committee. But this, this project has been delayed, and in terms of what it does, it's not 100% total rip-out, put-in, okay? It's upgrades and so forth. So my feeling in the capital outlay, what we heard in the plan, or in, in the request, was that number was a good number, and I'm just saying you can find the committee.
I'm not arguing to do it or not, I'm just saying the number doubled one year, that's all. So I'm trying to understand whether it was an expansion of scope, or whether the cost of pipe or not.
Have you bought a car lately?
I don't know.
You know, that, it's the cost, and, you know, we, they've gone out for estimates. So what we've worked with is the number provided by the department.
So since you raised that, about did I buy a car lately? I'm not going to answer that, but I think you'll find a lot of people in town are putting more miles and years on their cars because they can't afford to buy them. And maybe the town can't afford to buy some of this stuff.
When I talk about cars, I'm talking about municipal vehicles.
I understand.
Okay?
Right, and again, let's, let's, let's just keep on task, and we're here to look at the capital outlay plan and talk about it and look at the numbers. We understand that different department heads have brought these requests forward, and the numbers are coming from those people. So as we go further into the capital outlay plan, this is our first opportunity to have this discussion. Doesn't mean there won't be several other discussions and more vetting of information. I think we all know that from the history of, of how this goes about till we get to town meeting and the warrant, so.
I just have one question. Can you give a quick thumbnail as to what we have already borrowed that isn't on the tax rolls yet, has to still be posted?
I'd have to defer to the Finance Director to see if she has that information through our financial advisor. It may not be readily available tonight.
That's all right. I, I mean, this is a much smaller number than we had last year for the current year, and I assume less of it will have to be borrowed, but I assume there'll be some borrowing, and it's good just to know what we have out there right now.
Hi, Kathleen.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Kathleen Barrett, Finance Director. I do not have all that specific information for you. I wouldn't want to provide estimates or ballparks, it's not-
Sure.
The best source, but that is something that we can prepare for a future time, get that more detailed for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kathleen.
You're done?
Yep.
Mark?
The only thing I'd like to say is on the, on the- The only thing I'd like to say is on the slate roof...
Oh, by the way, excuse me. You are a member of the Capitol Outlay Committee.
He's one of our members.
As is Dan. Where's Dan? Dan's not there.
And I raised the issue about the difference in price, but be that as it may, as the finance committee head has told me, the three bids will take care of that. But as I researched slate roofs, they have an estimated long life, longevity of about 80 to 150 years. So, I would just... If it hasn't been done already, some of the literature I read said that if the roof has about 20%, 25% defective tiles, it's worthwhile to fix that. So, I would just suggest before we spend perhaps $650,000 or whatever, that if it hasn't already been done, that a full evaluation of that slate roof be done. And you could perhaps, perhaps, get 10 or 15 or 20 more years on it. Because as I said in the start of my comments, slate roofs can last from anywhere from 80 to 150 years. So, that's it.
Hold this out. Bob?
That roof is approximately 85 years old now.
I would just add, what I heard Sean Libby say about the roof when we went for the site visit was, it's not just the roof, it's the gutters, and it's all the plyboard that needs to be replaced. But he's also concerned that it's a safety issue if Kara is having people in the courtyard that slates can fall off. And the kids tend to, when they're doing their thing, they jump on that flat roof, and then they jump on the slate roof, which has caused some issues. So, I think it's more than... It's also a sa... And you weren't at that site visit, Mark, but he's concerned that it's a safety issue. So, it's not just replacing the roof, but it's a little bit of a safety issue as well. So, I'll just share that from what I recall.
You good, Mark? You good? Bob?
A few questions. I'm not sure if this turns out to be the meeting to ask them or not, but I guess I'll find out. There is a huge change in the DPW complex number from last year. Can it just be described as to what has changed? It's like triple last... This was on the plan last year, but it's materially different. And as to what has happened? And that can't be just priced to go from $3 million to $9 million?
Just for clarification, you're talking about under the facilities maintenance, the 209 Queen Anne, the DPW? Just pointing that out.
That's exactly right. DPW complex line item.
Right. And you're talking about FY 2027?
Yes, I am.
We have Link here. He can probably just...
Yep. Where is it? Oh, right there.
Can you answer that, Link? He'd love to.
Maybe not the way they want it.
Thank you. Link Hooper, DPW Director. Unfortunately, that is a price escalation. We had estimated... This is a glorified space building, for lack of a better term. And we had just priced it out based upon some previous things. It was on the plan. We actually engaged an engineering company that has built both the town of Yarmouth and the town of Orleans. And those estimates came directly from them. And so, the actual construction, we were in the ballpark. I think we were off by a million. So, okay, go ahead. But there was all this other ancillary stuff that we had not stopped to consider that started adding the cost to what it is, to absolutely shocking.
So, the details of the project really are more extensive than what was considered last year?
Yeah. Yes. We were looking at... The previous number, I think, was $3 million if I'm not mistaken. Something like that. That was the facilities manager and myself making some phone calls and talking to some construction people and so forth. We decided that they appeared to be interested in this. So, we engaged an engineering firm that did the Yarmouth DPW facility and the Orleans. And this is what they came back with. And I can share the details. I have the details. We're submitted, so forth. I don't know them off the top of my head.
Thank you, Link.
Thanks, Link.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, Bob?
We have a new line item, but it's got values in it for all the years for electronic records and information technology. That sounds like, again, a change from... Complete line item change from last year. Any comment that can be made as to how this suddenly became an annual number that was never an annual number before?
Well, I guess my first response would be, as we learned through conversation between Town Council and the moderator, the plans change every year. Fiscal year '24 to '28, that was adopted last year, is the plan for last year or current year. Fiscal year '25 to '29 will be a new plan with a new vote of town meeting. And so, my directive to all the department heads and request of elected officials was, if there were any projects that had not been contemplated, that are now being contemplated. So, for the information technology, you'll see that we're continuing on with our technology reinvestment. The electronic records and content management is actually a joint project, co-sponsored by both information technology and the Town Clerk's Office. I believe prior years, Town Clerk capital were handled as separate appropriating articles, and we're not on the plan. So, it's added as part of information technology. It's a joint venture, and it is new based on our fairly new Town Clerk, if I may say it that way.
Thank you, Joe.
I would say, well, my interpretation of it is, and my experience has been that the town municipal government's always tended to be behind on latest technologies and whatnot and keeping their record systems up to date and their systems up to date. This I see as an opportunity for us to at least try and make a dent in the leaping forward and bring ourselves into the 21st century, I guess, right?
And I think further, what we all see littered across the desks may become more electronic in the future, but...
Never.
And to give you further background, we just got Microsoft Office. So, that ought to tell you where we're at, so.
Actually, I want to have my glasses on and sit near one.
I guess for now, one last question. And actually, it's last year's that is a surprise in some regards, but I'll mention it anyway for this year. And that's the police department cruiser replacement. Last year, we had none for all the other years, and which seems like an oddity, actually. But... And we're kind of back to having a, I think, back to having an annual replacement. Again, can I get a comment on how this changed from year to year? I can answer that.
Well, Michael.
We put it in the budget last year, Bob. It was not a capital...
It was an expense item in accounting terms. It was an expense item, like paper, toilet paper.
So, part of the free cash item?
Part of the operating budget.
Operating budget.
Operating budget.
It's now being accounted for, much like the fire trucks, the ambulances. Right. It's scheduled out. They know what's going to be flipping over and so forth.
That's all. Thank you.
Dana?
I have no questions.
Okay. Michelle?
I just did one question about the 2029 Harwich Elementary School maintenance of $1.115 million. I was just curious to know what that is.
I'm going to say from instinct that it's boilers, but I'm going to confirm it.
I think you're right, Joe. It is boilers. The rooftop units of this year.
Thank you. Sorry. That's it. It's boilers. But it all, I think it's worth repeating for anyone and everyone that's watching. As we all know, when the two towns and the district change the assessment, we're now, the town of Harwich, completely responsible for our capital projects at the Harwich Elementary School. This is the second year, it appears, on the plan, and it will be going in future years as well to add more transparency to that process.
Rich?
I don't have any questions. I mean, we put the plans together. I'm really happy on the way it turned out. I've been around a while, and I remember town meeting nights, these numbers change. Okay? This is what we're putting together for now. I want to thank the department heads and those employees that were involved in providing us numbers. I've said this in the past. We ask a lot from our employees and department heads, sort of like pseudo-MBA's, that they're going to be able to provide us and this body here financial information when in fact they might not have a financial background. We fortunately have a lot of people that sort of know a lot about numbers. And we try to implement that on paper. So, mine is more of a thanks to the time that these people have dedicated to us and still will dedicate as we move forward. That's...
Thank you, Rich.
She has a question?
Sure.
No. Excuse me. Excuse me. In order to ask a question, you have to go up to the podium and identify yourself and, yes, and ask this chair.
I'm a little confused on the expression pseudo.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Are you hiring people that are truly qualified? I'm sorry. What?
You need to identify yourself. And then you need to address this board.
Lorraine Murphy, 43, Red Pine Drive. I just laid it felt. And my first meeting. And I'm a little confused about the expression pseudo-MBA. Do we encourage them to take accounting courses? Do we have programs that allow... We pay for their tuition to go?
I'm going to interrupt you to explain that, first of all, this is a joint meeting with Capitol Outlay and Finance.
Okay. Fine. That's fine.
And when we're talking about department heads formulating budgets, that an MBA, he's just making the point that they're being asked to gather a lot of financial information. So, that's...
I apologize.
That's fine.
I'm sorry. I just, as I said, the expression, I didn't understand.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
So, Rich, are you all set?
Yeah. I'm done. And Dan's got...
And actually, Joe has... I'm going to go to Joe first. Did you have something, Joe?
More of a wrap-up, unless there's questions.
You have a question?
I just have a general question, and it has to do with the capital request forms. Do departments have to explain the consequences to the town if their projects are not approved?
There is space and narrative for that. Many department heads have availed themselves of that narrative on the form and also with addenda. And we'll have more of that as we explain the funding requests going forward.
Okay. And did you have further follow-up?
Yeah. Just to... Because we've had some discussion about previous years and current years, I wouldn't want the opportunity to pass without just identifying at the bottom of the form some significant changes in a more positive direction. So, if you would, if you draw your attention to the Water Department, this is an instance where we were assuming a $2 million cost on the repainting of the Pleasant Lake Avenue tank. However, the water wastewater superintendent, again, going out to the marketplace, it's 1.75. So, again, still million, but lower than what we expected last year. So, we're grateful for that. Additionally, a reason why you'll see the plan last year going from just over $20 million to just over $11 million, you'll notice that there was $10 million underwater department, and that...
Excuse me. If you're going to have conversation, you'll have to take it outside. Excuse me. Thank you.
So, the reference to distribution system upgrades, $10 million. The water wastewater superintendent was pursuing grant money for that and federal funding for that, and we were not approved. So, that was a hopeful project that if we got that funding, we would move forward. It would be an added benefit, so to speak. It's in no way a diminution of the Water Department projects or anything of that nature. And then, last but not least, you'll see that there's a reference to Water Department, Watershed, and Wastewater Department. So, first, to Wastewater Department going forward, that's going to be understood to be wastewater operations. So, you can see that there's collection system improvements. And in out years, there's vehicles. So, as we build wastewater infrastructure, there'll be the potential for capital projects for that as well. And then, the watershed is the new name, according to our engineers, GHD Engineering, based on the regulations that the Mass DEP went through. The reference now is no longer to wastewater, but to watershed management. So, going forward, we're going to have watershed management program or WMP programs. And we're still in that system, quite obviously. I think you all know we're working on Phase 3, which would be two contracts for East Harwich that was approved last year or this past town meeting that we're working through the Mass SRF, excuse me, State Revolving Fund Program on. The reason why we have zeros for watershed management program is Phase 4 is heavily dependent upon what's going to be happening on Cape Cod and other communities. Phase 4 is the one where we would have to have conversations about either sending a flow elsewhere for treatment. And if that's not an option, we then have to face the consequences of, is the town then going to have to build its own treatment plant? However, in conversation with our engineers, that is not something they foresee happening within the next three years. So, we do expect that there will be numbers coming, perhaps within the next year, year and a half, for the later years, but presently not. And so, the combination of all those helps move our last year projections from just over $20 million to now just over $11 million.
Thank you, Joe. Any other questions from this board?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not going to relitigate last year. So, the question I have, recognizing what Peter had brought up, it doesn't disturb me as much, understanding that the Inflation Reduction Act ironically had exactly the opposite of what its title said, because all these projects have driven up across the country, have driven up across asphalt, or of course, steel pipe, driven up the cost of a whole bunch of things. And you almost can't get siding and other things. So, that's what's driving a lot of these figures up. Aside from the magnitude of the numbers, I just want to bring it out in public. Are there any... Is there anything that overtly is different here than the year 2 last year that was either added or dropped? Forgetting about the magnitude of the cash involved with each of these.
Well, for me, it wasn't just the magnitude of those projects that I mentioned. So, it's the reduction of some Water Department and what we now call Watershed that was removed. It was the addition of newer projects like the ERM or Electronic Records Management or Electronic Content. It was compiling all of the projects for Brooks Academy into one year on the recommendation of the Facilities Maintenance Manager for an economy of scale. I think otherwise, we've captured just about everything.
Yeah. Go ahead, Don.
Just to make this simple, because I don't want to have you operate out of your memory, is there any chance of just getting us a listing of what it is that was taken out or put in for the FY '25 for some future meeting?
So, I can give you big numbers.
I... I'm on a listing of projects.
I have that too, but I did the analysis. I have that too. I was just going to... I mean, I was just going to say we deleted $12.6 million in projects in 2025.
I'm not looking for the number. I'm looking for the projects.
Right.
So, that's fine. Give it to you.
Sounds like that, yeah.
Yeah. Sounds like we can get you that information. You can also look at the list last year, but that's okay. Yeah? Michael?
If we have it handy, why not tell the public right now while we're on this subject?
Yeah. So, we deleted three projects in 2025 for $12.6 million, the ones that Joe mentioned in the Water Department. And there was one small one for administration that was beautifying the town of $50,000. We added $644,000, which, again, Joe's gone through the IT project, the police cruisers, and then the water well rehabilitation and some wastewater collection systems improvements. The money they're going to need now to run the wastewater department if they need to make changes, which they've already had to do. So, they need a little fund to do that. And then, the rest of them, I just grouped in sort of, honestly, price adjustments or moving projects in. And that total was $2.7 million. So, as Joe said, Brooks Academy was moved in just to get it done. There were things, prices that changed in mostly vehicle costs, you know? $70,000 in ambulances and $20,000 in fire vehicles, $160,000 in public work vehicle replacement and Water Department vehicle replacement. Of course, the... Of course, the golf is double at 1.25. There was, the Harwich Elementary School added $120,000. The water tank was down 250, and there were some equipment replacements in the Water Department of 107, but the total was 2.7 million. So the net impact for 2025 actually was a reduction of 9.2 million.
Great, thank you. Yep, Rich?
Just a note to the audience, 2025, last year was a projected year, and in the columns it was the second year. '24 was the capital plan or budget last year, was '24. '25 was the next year. This year, the '25 becomes the actual, and that's what we're talking about, the changes. So, you know, we get confused sometimes, but we get it right.
Don?
Again, I was asking for something more like what Rich had just said. I understand the adjustments and everything, I'm just, and I know that we have the columns from last year, I just want to see a list of, okay, this was brought into this year, and it appeared last year at so-and-so, or it didn't, whatever.
Okay.
Just to show the things, not the money. The things that are prioritized.
I'll get you this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? John, do you have a question for, because this is a
Public hearing, right? John Chori.
This is a public hearing, right?
This is not a public hearing, it's a joint meeting.
Okay, well, I do have some questions then, which have been, most of them have been answered. John Chori again, I'll go down the list, there's no set order here. It's just that I was reading literature in the packet today, it came out. The Brooks Academy, I noticed that it was all clumped together into 1.1 million dollars. In their explanation of what, the funding sources, which I'll get to on another question, is that they were probably going to supplement it with CPC funds. They're not on the list for CPC funds at all this year, so they have to wait for next year to request those. So that's, so that's that. So the 1.1 would have to come out of funding for the town here. Either funding source for, for the capital items, we've already discussed that, there'll be a column and some other revision of the capital plan, and how this, all these requests are going to be funded. Usually they are at this meeting like this, they're in there. Apparently they aren't this year. The golf request has doubled from last year, you covered that. Free cash, when will that be certified? I guess it was mentioned January or February. Is there any date beside, that's kind of a broad, that's eight weeks
Not a specific date yet.
That's eight weeks of
Understood.
Okay, okay. Usually it's, again, that's certified by this time this year. DPW building tripled. Load, we talked about the generator. I'd like to see what the load is. That's a very simple question that could be answered, what the load request for that generator is, and the fuel source. I was curious what the fuel source is for that generator. Should be a very, very simple question to ask. I'm surprised no one asked that question during the budget review. Current debt and approved debt, not spent. You folks have done an excellent job on approved warrant articles, approved but unspent. You put a great list together of how you're working on those. Could we do the same thing for debt? I understand there's probably, I tried to find something on the website today, I could not find anything that I could use for debt references. I believe there's over 40 debt schedules out there for various projects over the years. It'd be nice to have a list of current debt and approved debt, because we approved debt last year of over $50 million for sewer and wastewater. Previous year, we included, that debt hasn't hit, but it's been approved. So it'd be good to know what our future liabilities are.
So Kathleen did mention she'll be pulling information together, Kathleen.
Okay, I'm just reiterating, I think it's a good idea, like you did on the project things. And I did not see, on the '24 list, I saw a, and actually I saw it on the early '25 budget, capital budget, a line item for beautification of villages of Harwich. I didn't see it on this list right here, that it was printed today. Has that been eliminated, or is that being funded somewhere else? That's the question.
Eliminated. It was desirable. It didn't meet the standards, so I held my own application to the same standards that I hold the other departments to.
Okay.
However, that could change in conversation with the board. We have funds that are available from prior years. If I could, Madam Chair, I just want to go back to an earlier statement, though. On the Brooks Academy restoration, the application does not say they're seeking CPC funds. It says that this is supplementing CPC funds that were already approved for exterior restoration.
Thank you, Joe.
Oh, the generator. There was a generator that was in back of the library. We replaced the library's generator with a bigger one. There was a smaller one there that we used to power the library at some time. As far as I know, it's still sitting there. And I'm wondering if we could repurpose that generator for maybe the harbor, depending on what the load is. I haven't checked the specifications of that generator, but just wondering if that's, because it's just being sitting there. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ginny and then Link, did you want to
Ginny Hewitt, Library Director, just wanted to say, the library has never had a generator before the current one. So the one that's there now, still in use, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ginny. Don't take it away.
Leave this alone. I'll be real brief with this. I was asked about some of the cost escalations with the DPW facility. This is a graph, I know you can't see it. You see the nearly vertical line going there? This is from 2020. They said DPW construction costs were $376, 2024, 802.
Thanks for that depressing news.
As the director steps away, I will say, thank you, Link, it is in the packet.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're, we're good, so do you want
Julie, if I just put in one pitch, you'll notice there are seven of us here tonight. The Finance Committee is down two members. And so if anyone is interested in participating, if you join the Finance Committee, contact the Selectmen's Office, fill out a Citizen Information Form, and/or contact the moderator. The moderator points to the members of the Finance Committee, so we're down two members.
Thank you for pointing that out, Peter.
Yeah, I also, I'll do a ditto.
Okay.
We are, we are represented by five members, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. We're down one. It is by either a department or a function within the town. For instance, there are two gentlemen there who are on the Finance Committee, but also are represented on the Capitol Outlay. I'm the Town Administrator, so we go through this. We're down one. So if you really want, we have a lot of fun in ours. So we
We have no fun in ours.
We're a lot easier to work with, so we have one availability. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do you want to adjourn?
So motion to adjourn?
Aye. Pushing to adjourn?
Aye, aye, aye.
The move, thank you.
Paul? You're good, man.
Did you get a second?
Oh, I got a third, we're good.
All right, thanks. Thanks for joining us. I'm sure we'll be talking frequently, so.
Thank you, Paul.
I'll just give everybody a minute to clear before we move on.
Chairman has all the major responsibilities.
That was my document that I used. All right.
Thank you. Appreciate the efforts.
Sure, let me just make the point when we're taking it out of order. So if you take the conversations outside, we'd appreciate it. We're going to take
You're in the shot.
We're going to take one, one item out of order under New Business E. Michael?
I've moved that we approve a new 2024 annual class for auto repair license for C&amp;B Automotive and DVA Reflections Auto Restoration for Evergreen Way Unit 1.
Second.
Moved in second. Did any discussion?
Only one. I just wanted to welcome the new owners of Reflection, and welcome to the town, and good luck.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you, have a good night. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Onto New Business Item A.
Bruce ran out a little hand.
And this is the discussion and possible vote to call a special town election to fill the current Select Board vacancy term to expire May 21st, 2024. So Emily, our Town Clerk, has given us quite extensive information on when the recommended date would be for that election, and unfortunately, we can't cancel the petition. So I guess the discussion will be on whether or not we want to move forward with the April 9th date, or an alternative. Or discussion?
I know there's some folks here in the public, and I know you said it wasn't a public meeting, but I would tell you that I think for the first time in a long time, Patrick Otten and I actually agree on something. I absolutely see no point, other than the fact that there is a petition to hold a town meeting at the expense of $30,000 to fill a seat for one month. I think the clerk, I don't think, I know the clerk did an outstanding job prior to the certification outlining to the board what the dates meant. So, you know, my recommendation, based on the petitioner, and I would imagine he's talked to some of the signees, which I've spoken to several, and they didn't really understand what it was they were asking, and they didn't understand what the town clerk had put out there as a date. But boy, we could save the town an awful lot of money if we had it on May 20th, the day before our annual
So Emily, do you want to come up and speak to that? Because I do think that there was a lot of effort to get that information out to the public so they understood the impact and the cost.
Good evening, Emily Mitchell, Town Clerk. So I did probably share too much detail in my memorandum and files with you that are available in your board packet. There was a petition filed properly with the appropriate number of signatures certified, 242 in total. So that does compel the Select Board to call a special town election. I did speak with our Town Council, and they confirmed that we must adhere to the 64-day minimum, but that there's no outside kind of maximum during which you had to hold the election, as long as it was prior to the annual. So your boundary markers are February 6th, which is 64 days from tonight, and then May 20th, yes, on the, the outer end. I did go into some detail in my memorandum to you, saying that my two primary variables informing my recommendation were the presidential primary election, which is scheduled on March 5th, and then just the minimum timeframes that are needed between any two elections, because we have to reprogram memory cards and test equipment and have ballots printed, and those types of logistical factors. So you legally could hold an election on May 20th. That does pose the same logistical problems of memory cards and things like that. There are some options, I would say, in light of the petitioner expressing interest in not pursuing this with full force. You, for example, can hold shortened hours for a local election. So if we wanted to hold a special town election that was only open, say, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM, that's an option that reduces election worker costs, police detail costs, things like that. It doesn't minimize the setup, it doesn't minimize the equipment, it doesn't minimize the ballot printing, but it impacts some of the staff time. For a purely local election, the Select Board has the authority to opt out of vote by mail, which is otherwise offered by default. So that would impact some of the ballot printing requirements, and would certainly impact staff time involved for preparing those types of ballots. So those are kind of the majority of your options for minimizing impacted costs to the town.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I think we're still, the timeframe is unchanged, which means elections.
But if we were to do it on May 20th, you're going to have the same logistical impacts that we're trying to avoid for all other purposes.
Right.
So, understanding where, you know, Select Board member Michael McCaskill's coming from, but at the same token, I think the impact to you and your staff is still there. So, back to, I think, another, the April 9th date, which is the date you had recommended. Any other board members have any? Jeff?
Yeah, just Emily, thank you so much for the work you did. You are the expert, so I'm inclined to agree and support with, support exactly what you're recommending. But I, I do think I want to take this time to announce to the public how approachable we all are. We have office hours, we return phone calls, emails. So if there's an ask out there in the public, and Patrick, you know, I told you at the dump, I thank you for what you're doing, and I thought it was powerful of you to move forward with your petition. But since there was an awful lot of misinformation out there, and some people, many people didn't quite understand the ask, we're here to answer those questions with an unbiased, honest, truthful, and transparent explanation as to what's being presented and what it means for the town of Harwich. So that's, that's all I wanted to say, but I'm inclined to go with your recommendation.
Thank you, Jeff. And I think that this board also tried to put that information out there consistently, week to week, just so that people understood that impact. Don, do you have anything?
I'm probably ultimately going to get where Jeff is, but I am, I am somewhat disappointed, because I know this isn't a prevailing view up here, but I was more interested in the democracy part of this than I was in the 20,000 or so dollars. I can't recall an executive being vacant in an elected position for six months. And as such, I kind of thought it was an unforced error on our part, that we refused to call an election when you could have done something in January. A month movement has caused a three-month change in the, in the projected date. I think that's fair to say. So we're in this predicament because those are the cards we've been dealt right now. The horse has already left the barn. It's, we can't go back. So, but I am somewhat disappointed, because as I said, if we had acted when we knew that there was a vacancy, there could have been an election in the beginning, middle of January, and now we've lost three months.
Well, and I would follow that up with the fact that we did have discussions on that, and the impact that it was going to have still to staff in January. So that also helped us make decisions in terms of how we chose to move forward. So I would say that a lot of thought has gone into trying to make the best decision. And I don't think, again, we're going to please everybody, so. Emily?
One last, and this is really a wild card thought I've only had since the lead petitioner made the announcement earlier. And I don't want to assume that the lead petitioner is speaking on behalf of the other 241 signers. One option, again, that I have not fleshed out, because it's only been a few minutes. If you were very serious about a May 20th date and really minimizing the impact, presuming that it's no longer the goal to get a candidate into the seat for that six weeks, I could reach out to our vendor who programs our tabulators and see if they have memory cards available to rent. Sometimes they do, sometimes they do not. They don't guarantee it under our service agreement or our contract. If we had two sets of memory cards, we could potentially hold an election the day before. So if that was truly the pleasure of the board, I could explore that option and get back to you. Or if you would prefer to move forward with the dates, assuming the circumstances, as I knew them prior to tonight's meeting, then I would stand by the April recommendation.
Well, I'd be interested in hearing if there was availability. What do you think?
I would as well, and there's two things in play here for me, and it's money and time spent by you and your department. And if it's beneficial for both, then I think I'd like to explore it.
Yeah, yeah, if you would, that'd be great.
Sure.
Just bring us back the info.
Okay, I'd be happy to get that prepared for your next meeting.
Great, thank you, Emily.
Sure. And the April 9th date would still be on the table, of course, because it's, well, more than 64 days.
Right, so we can
It wouldn't change anything materially if we put it off for a week, too.
So if we table it for a week, yeah, okay. So that, I think, you know, we'll do that, is that the general feeling of the board?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Michael?
That was my idea, so.
Yeah, okay. Don?
No, that's, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, now, on to Item B. Discussion regarding the potential use of electronic vote tabulators, the clickers, at future town meetings. And we have our moderator, Michael Ford, here, and Emily, if you want And we have our moderator, Michael Ford, here, and Emily, if you want to come back up, if needed, I guess.
I'll be up, stand by.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for alerting me this was on your agenda. I will tell you that electronic voting has been used in the town of Orleans, where I serve as town council for, I think they're in their fourth year now. They started it in their inaugural use of it was during COVID, when they had a town meeting at Nauset Beach in the parking lot. And you attended by means of driving your car to the parking lot. Town meeting was on a dedicated FM station, but we did have microphones that were hustled around by tellers to the various cars so people could speak. But that was our first time using the electronic clickers. It was a success, and it has been a success at every meeting since then, from my viewpoint as town council. And one of the reasons it's been a success is that they have, the moderator, in his discretion, has used it not on every motion, but on those items where you know there's going to be a standing count. And there's a lot of procedural motions that happen at town meeting, and to work the clickers up and wait the 15 seconds or the 30 seconds of time before all the voters tabulated, pro and con, many of those procedural motions could have been quickly done on a voice vote and you move right on. So finding that medium between the two, when you continue to use voice votes, and then using the clickers for the standing counts, has really made for an efficient meeting, as I've seen it evolve. It took a few times to get it to where the voters were comfortable with it, but it happened. I think there's at least four towns on the Cape that have it now. Falmouth, of course, Falmouth's a representative town meeting. I believe Eastham, they were the first open town meeting, I think, to have it. Orleans has it. Chatham now is in their second year of utilizing it. And my recommendation would be that we consider it. But I think it's a decision that needs to be made by town meeting voters. And so, and since it requires money, it can be expensive, and you really need to look at whether you want to lease them, lease with an option, or purchase them, and then try and build up your own in-house IT department so that you can easily handle it. And after doing that, I think the payback is, you know, four or five years. You have to look at the numbers and see what it really is. Chatham bought theirs. Orleans continues to rent theirs, but it's a fairly steep price. For example, I think the meeting out at Nauset Beach, which was a very complicated meeting, and we had about 700 in attendance in their cars, was about $25,000. That's a lot of money for one meeting. And so if you start doing that on an annual basis, and if you have a fall meeting, it could be $50,000 if you, you know. So you got to figure out a way to make it pay. And I think Chatham did a lot of analysis before they did it, and they jumped right in and purchased it. I think they funded it with ARPA funds. You might want to check that out through Joe, through Jill, or whatever. But in addition to that, they used some of that ARPA money, I think, to beef up their IT side of things in town, and now that fits right in that budget, and it's all a municipal enterprise. You want to make sure if you get them, you don't get the internet ones, those are the ones that have had problems with hacking and so forth, but there are shortwave ones that are very safe and just local in terms of the connection. I think the total number of town meetings now that use electronic voting in some form are over 70. So it's more than half. And, you know, when I first thought about it, people contacted me about it a few years back, I kind of went, hmm, this is town meeting. People ought to be able to stand up and speak, and they ought to be able to stand up and vote, and we shouldn't need to get into this, gee, I want every vote I make private. But I understand things have changed, and this is one of the advances of civilization, and it provides, I think, convenience, and some people enjoy the privacy of it on a standing count. And so I think the voters are entitled to make the decision. So I've kicked it around a little bit with Emily, and I think our joint recommendation would be, since there probably isn't money for this year, insert an article in the warrant, get the voters' feedback, put a provision in it where some money could be appropriated for next year's, maybe form a committee under the article, and have them take a look at the costs, lease versus option, purchase, whatever, make some recommendations to the selectmen, and then you could go forward. And if it works in 2025, if it passed in 2024 at town meeting, if the voters say they'd like to try it, and it works in 2025, maybe the first timeout is the lease with an option of purchase, and then you, if it all goes well, you can make it part of the complex. But I think the voters are entitled to, I think we have an obligation as public officials to put it to the voters to see whether they'd like to pursue it.
No, thank you.
And I think we're probably at that point, at least that would be my recommendation to the board. And if you decide to do an article, I'm happy to work with Emily to put it together and get it back to you for consideration for the warrant.
Okay.
But those would be my thoughts.
Thank you, Michael. Discussion by the board? Jeff? Michael?
I would say I appreciate your recommendation, as that goes a long way. I think you're right, we put it before the voters. I agree with a previous statement that you made, that you should stand and be proud of your vote. What I've noticed in Harwich, I don't think we have a problem. The only time that we have a problem, or town meeting gets extended, is terminating debate on a question. And normally, the termination of debate is related to petition articles, which I think this board needs to do some work on placement this year, and how we put our warrant together, because traditionally, they're at the back end of the meeting, and those most interested in petition articles stay for it, and those that don't leave. And I would say that oftentimes, it would be questionable, even on a quorum, but other times, the last petition article gets there. So I think our votes go very, very fast, and I think people should stand and be proud of their vote.
So when I was first elected moderator, more years ago than I want to tell you, the town used to have a bylaw that required any time we borrowed money, it was a secret ballot. And so the town clerk, every night, we had the ballot can up front, and yes and no is ready, and town meetings, when I first started, went five or six nights. They were marathons. And so, and much of that was driven by secret ballots. And we then got rid of that bylaw, and only went to ballot questions, but it was, we probably had it for at least the first 10 years I was moderator, eventually got rid of it. And now we only do a secret ballot when somebody requests it, and I put it to the voters and they really want to do it. And in those situations, I kind of respect what the majority wants to do, and we do it. But it's very rare that we have a secret ballot. If we still had that bylaw, I would have been pushing electronic voting a long time ago.
Don?
But the whole notion of standing up and taking your vote, I thought you'd be interested in that, Michael, that we had a bylaw years ago that was just the opposite. Whenever we were going to borrow money, you had a right to have a secret ballot. So that's, that's, those were the rules.
Thank you.
Do you have anything, Don?
Yeah. Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. In support of what Michael said, what Mike is saying right now, I hope everybody realizes that if we go back into the deep darkest recesses of the beginning of all this process, they used to vote publicly on the dole. I don't know how uncomfortable that could possibly have been, to actually vote with a card when you were trying to talk about one of your fellow neighbors. So I definitely like the idea of being, the whole Mayflower compact thing, where you debate stuff, you stand up, you stand for your vote. But I also recognize why people would like to be able to have some confidentiality. Things have somewhat changed. And I kind of like what you're saying as a process. It's bigger than us. Just put it to town meeting in an article. If they turn it down, we're not going to do it. If they accept it, then we go to step two and see how it works.
You know, Don, I recall a meeting about 10 years ago now, where a married couple were sitting in the front row. We debated something for all of, at least 40 minutes. And it was a standing count, because I couldn't call it orally. And the husband got up on the yes, and he turned and looked at his wife, who was still sitting there, and said, "Why didn't you tell me I would have gone home an hour ago?" So, here's where the standing count came in.
Oh, my God. Well, I think that your recommendation is a good one, is to, you know, put an article together, put a subcommittee or a committee together to just, you know, try to gather that information. Because in general, do they, when you're doing the leases, is it for 1,000? I mean, how do the towns determine how many they are looking to also lease?
So, you know, we, the town clerk would, we have a very thorough town clerk, and she would check numbers and we could, but you just never know. I mean, Chatham bought 1,200. And at their last special town meeting, they rented another 300, and they still didn't have enough.
Yeah.
They had over, almost 1,700 people there for that Council on Aging yet third vote. And so those people had to go into a separate room with an assistant moderator and be counted separately in that room without those. So the meeting still went forward, but, so what would you buy? Gee, we'd look at attendance records and, you know, probably somewhere around 1,000, 800 to 1,000. That's what most communities buy is 800, but you have to look at it and see.
Okay.
Make a recommendation.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. I don't know if Emily wants to say anything further, but.
No, good. So, and I just want to make sure that, Patrick, you understand that we do understand it's a process, and that we are looking into putting together an article. So thank you for bringing it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
No, again, I'll just conclude by saying thank you, okay, to everyone, okay? Good.
Thank you. Discussion and possible vote on the 2022 special town meeting article, three, bylaw, charter review, use of appropriated funds for governance review. I'm going to hand this over to Joe.
So, Madam Chair, members, what you have in your packet is, first of all, the cover sheet of the October 18, 2022 special town meeting, when the funds were appropriated. The next page, you'll see what was in the warrant, as far as the warrant article, the explanation of the town, a competing explanation from the Finance Committee, recommendations, and proposed motion. And then the next page, you have what was certified by the town clerk as having been voted. And then I must confess, I'm not really sure what the other documents are, I didn't have those myself.
So I think that those were just for discussion about zoning, bylaw changes, et cetera.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Some of it, which, you know, was applicable to some of last year's articles, but also some feedback from John Ideman, who talked about the various zoning assessments that we should be doing. And we, this board, talked about the fact that we have some malfunctioning zoning and charter conversations that need to be had, too. So, and I just want to point out, on the article itself, and the motion that was made to amend, I have to admit, I think I missed this, because I don't understand why we would have restricted it to the town's current code and got rid of zoning bylaws. We always said that we were going to be looking at the zoning bylaws. We just said that we, that meaning not bylaw charter review, would look at the zoning. So that's a little bit confusing to me on that. I don't know if anyone else has a different recollection, but I remember having a conversation. Michael?
We did support it, and the Finance Committee did not, and in the reconciliation meeting, it was taken out.
Okay, so we did not move forward with that?
We did not move forward with it.
Okay. I found that confusing. So we have $75,000, and we were talking about first having the review of the code, Joe, to get us to sort of a starting point?
Correct, that was the original intent, that administration had through the board. Again, I want to point out that the explanation that appeared in the warrant, and just going back to it, the document you have says page 11 of 16. So given that it was a special town meeting, we had ample time to do a full warrant, including motions, where I think, as you know, for annual, we do the motions book. So what's listed on page 11 was what was anticipated to be voted by both administration and the Select Board at the time. And that was, the purpose of the article is to appropriate funds to be used to support a comprehensive review of the town's current code, which is comprised of the Harwich Charter, general bylaws, and zoning bylaws. The goal of the review is to recommend changes to elements of the town's code referenced above. It is anticipated that proposed amendments to the code will begin at the next annual town meeting. And then what follows was an explanation by Finance Committee. This was an article that was proposed by me as administrator, debated, and supported by the Select Board. So we have two different arguments or discussions that are going on. In any event, as I understand your agenda item tonight, you, as the board, you have funds that were appropriated by town meeting for a purpose, they're under the span of control of the Select Board, so you could use this opportunity to determine what, if anything, you want to do with those funds.
Any discussion by board members in terms of how to use those funds?
Well, you do always talk, and I agree with you. Okay, well, we do have the funds. The funds were appropriated by the voters. It is my intention to find out what can we count on with respect to the expectations of the progress, to utilize this $75,000 to do what many, if not all, have agreed the charter needs to be looked at. And I've asked several questions and got some answers. Recodification will be finalized, and Emily or Joe, if I'm wrong with this, let me know by January or February, and that's when, that's when they will be completely finalized. But I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense, or what prohibits us, the town, from moving forward prior to those dates, since we already know the outcomes, and this is just formality, from what I understand. I want to move this forward, and I want to do it thoughtfully.
Thank you, Jeff. Joe, do you want to respond, or Don, do you have a follow-up?
I don't even understand what he said, so.
You want me to, you want me to?
Oh, Michael.
The part about, we already know where we're.
The recodification process, we already understand.
It's that the E-code is being looked at currently.
Correct. And it's just a formality. Emily, if you, would you mind?
I'll do my best. Hi again, Emily Mitchell, Town Clerk. The recodification process that Jeff is referring to is just when we take the action that passed in the prior legislative year, so what happened at the 2023 annual town meeting, or was confirmed by vote of 2023 annual town election. And we incorporate those changes into the electronic edition of the bylaws and any printed copies of the codebook that staff rely on. So there was one charter change, the change from Board of Selectmen to Select Board, three zoning bylaw amendments, and three general bylaw amendments that passed during that 2023 cycle. They were all approved by the Attorney General, and they have been submitted to the vendor we use to host our bylaws, just to incorporate those changes, so that if someone logs on to, it's called E-code, the electronic edition, if they go onto that website, that, what they see there accurately reflects what happened in 2023. So I don't want to speak for you, Jeff, but I imagine you're saying, we know that those that those bylaws passed, and we know that they are in process of being incorporated. There's no mystery remaining about what the code will reflect. We know that they passed. We know that they've been approved, and we know that they've been submitted.
Right. So if I may, just for Don's benefit, we know what has been approved, and we're simply waiting for the electronic copy and the paper copy to come through in February. And I'm just wondering, could we begin this process prior to that?
And when you say this process, you mean also assessing the charter as well?
Absolutely.
That's why I was perplexed, because we were...
Assessing the charter as well, as while we're working on the code.
That's why I'm perplexed, because we normally, don't we normally appropriate money for when these happen? So this is not the first time we've ever had to do this. We always have to change the E-code, don't we? Like, every time that there's a change, we have to do that.
Yes, it's through the clerk's operating budget.
Yeah. So this was something else. We were supposed to be looking at consistency between various sections of the charter and see how we could reconcile it.
So maybe, maybe the, sorry, Don, I'm trying to...
No, go ahead. Yeah.
The confusion maybe between you and I is that I want to start the process of looking at our charter with $75,000 in the period of time we're waiting for the recodification to be finalized.
Okay.
That's what I was saying, and I clearly said it sloppily, so I apologize. Thank goodness for Emily.
Michael?
So just clarification, Joe, you mentioned that the board, this was a board decision. If memory serves me correct, your recommendation to the board, and I don't have the date handy, was to start with the E-code company that we currently use?
Correct. Path of least resistance. They have the expertise. They have the analysts, the analysts, and the ability to do that.
Okay. So the codification that we're speaking of now has nothing to do with what the board voted before. That happens anyway. The thought that we would continue to wait until that's done has me puzzled. And I did a little bit of research on the E-code company that we use. And I don't see that they're qualified to look at our charter. I don't qualify, I don't see that they're qualified to make changes in our charter. That most towns that do this use, ultimately use, a consultant and attorneys. And where I'm going with that is, we sat here in a joint meeting with charter bylaw when Mary Anderson was chair, sorry, when Mary Anderson was chair, and said that we would work with the current bylaw and charter review committee to bring some changes before town meeting. And here we are with no five-year forecast, no certified free cash. Tonight, we looked at that. We're going to dive into a budget process. And we've done nothing as a board on the charter review. We haven't moved the needle forward at all. And there's obviously a fair amount of angst out there about this. I said I wouldn't say social media tonight, but as seen on social media, there is a fair amount of angst between members, at least of charter bylaw and the Board of Selectmen, because we are not moving the needle forward. With that said, I'm looking for a recommendation and a real consultant and attorneys and a plan on how we're going to look at the charter, whom on both sides and the public consistently say it's vague and it's a mess. Who's going to help us get to the point where it's not? And I would applaud, under Linda Sebula's direction, as chair with charter bylaw, they are going to submit to us the work that they have done. And at least, I give you my pledge that some of those items that I will push to try and get before town meeting. It is a bit disheartening when one thing that the board continues and voted no on more than once last year, that that's one of the number things, number one things voted, to bring back again, and being accused of not doing anything last year, when we didn't get the charter changes until the 24th hour to actually do some real work on. So I look forward to, under your direction, getting them early this year so that we can debate those. Now back to the agenda topic. I'm not sure I see the need to spend $75,000 at this point, given that there is a petition circulating for a charter commission. Why would we spend $75,000 of taxpayer money and not just give it back to them if the route that is desired is to go to a charter commission, which, again, almost like using the E-code company, I think it's a huge mistake for this town, because nine elected people with their thoughts on what's best for Harwich is not necessarily the way we should be putting together our governing document. We should take the direction from other towns and look at attorneys and consultants and move forward thoughtfully together, like we said we were going to do at this table before. So I'm not sure about the $75,000 at this point, but I don't support giving any of it to the current E-code company. I'd rather see a plan and a consultant.
So the, so my understanding is it was not to give it to the E-code company, that the E-code company was doing, speaking to what Emily just talked about, the recodification, taking in the zoning bylaws after the AG approved it. The E-code company for bylaws is what everybody uses, most towns. And I think there's one variation I've seen. My understanding on this process was that bylaw charter review was working on assessing the charter. Part of that, while they looked at that, we were going to be assessing zoning bylaws. That's my recollection of our joint meeting, where we talked about looking at the zoning bylaws, which is a separate analysis, which E-code can certainly help, I guess, eventually. But as John Giorgio pointed out, we have language in our charter that doesn't talk to our bylaws and vice versa. And so while we try to look at the charter and the bylaw charter review committee is assessing that, we also need to be looking at our zoning bylaws in the overall way that they interact. And in some places, they don't interact at all, or they interact poorly. So I look at it like $75,000. We need to have a lot money to them looking at the charter, understanding your point on the commission. And then we need some money to be working with, I think it's the MMA, and they have a certain body, isn't it, through the body that starts to work with us to assess those things, right?
The zoning, yeah.
For the zoning. Joe?
That's not how I understood it. My answer was not relative to zoning. The Mass Municipal Association has subgroups. You folks are in the Mass Select Boards Association. I'm in the Mass Municipal Managers Association of the Triple MA. The Triple MA has several committees, one of which is Form of Government Committee. That is the successor of the former consultants that MMA and the Triple MA relied upon. And I'm very familiar with that committee because I serve on it.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may, just a clarification, Joe. What we, we just started this conversation. My portion was that you were waiting for E-code to be done, and we were going to task them with taking an original, an initial look at our charter, not zoning, because zoning had already been taken out of the article.
Correct. If I could, but it's also charter and general bylaws. There are many instances, as the chair mentioned, where the charter and the general bylaws either disconnect, override each other, et cetera. I have worked in the past with that company, and they have done editorial analysis. And to me, that was the level of care that I was starting with, from my perspective, having done that. And that's where they will say, okay, you have done your charter. You've changed the title to Select Board. Here are the, all the instances and all of the bylaw changes you have to reference to have that permeate all of your governing docs. And that was the recommendation of both council and the Attorney General's office, to do that kind of work.
Thank you. And the only reason for the ask was clarification that we were, in fact, going to give a portion of the $75,000 to that company to do what you just said.
Correct.
Right. So it wasn't just for zoning.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Don, I think you were...
He had a question.
Thank you. I just want to support what Michael was saying, because from my experience, and it goes back like 20-something years, is that the E-code company will make sure that all of the structure is correct, and it's placed in the right spots, everything. But they're not in the business of understanding what it is you're trying to accomplish by language and, you know, and how you want to handle that. We are. When we make our own, our charter changes, it has to do with what we're trying to accomplish. They're not really into that business. I mean, I can understand them being able to do a thorough review that says, okay, everywhere Selectman appears, Select Board is now going to appear, and to tidy up, that kind of stuff. But when there's a conflict between authorities in chapter four or in chapter seven, they're not going to be able to help with that, because that's a strategic objective on the part of the government and the people that vote on these things. So I agree with him. I'm not sure that I want to dump 75 grand on them, when what we were really trying to do originally was, let's find some flaws and see how we can resolve them. And I don't mean by nomenclature, like, what are you calling this? Where does it appear? And it doesn't appear in 2.1, it appears in 2.5. That's not what we were looking to do. We were looking to...
I don't think, I don't think anyone was saying that, that that's what we were looking to do. I think we were understanding that there were places in the charter that needed to be addressed and revised, or omitted, or updated, and that we also had zoning issues. Again, just to reiterate, that there are places, they do not talk to each other properly, or they don't talk to each other at all. So, again, just trying to break it down, he, Michael is saying that we did agree to spend money on E-code. I don't recall that. I don't, I don't not believe him. I didn't recall that. But what I'm saying is, I look at the $75,000, and how do we move forward? And so I think we need a consultant to work with bylaw charter review. And I think we need somebody, whether it's the Triple MA, you know, Fog Group, or is it a separate consultant? But I think that we're all talking about trying to achieve the revisions that we want to see. But we need to understand, who are these entities, and how do we get there?
I'm just speaking to whether they're the right people. I mean...
Yeah, I don't think that I ever thought E-code was going to be the ones who would analyze our bylaws and our zoning in particular. It was that they were a piece of the recodification. Michael recalls differently than I. And I think overall, what we understand here is all of it needs to be looked at. And how do we do that effectively? And with whom?
I thought we were going to include the planning board in the zoning part of that, along with a consultant.
Well, we just got to plan ourselves. Joe?
So I think what may be relevant to why is this conversation appearing again, it's because of the conversations that I've had with board members, with committee members, and others of, and various questions of where is the money for the bylaw charter review committee? And whatever confusion I may have caused, my statement all along has been that administration through the select board asked for funding. The select board received that funding and that appropriation. So it's the select board's money. And so what happens with that, you can either direct me, as both administrator and your procurement officer, to do any number of things, or you folks can do any number of things yourselves. But the discussion tonight is because questions have been asked of board members, of liaisons, and of me, where is the money for a bylaw charter review? Or I've also heard people ask, where is the money for the charter commission, which I need to emphasize, does not yet exist. And so you have this discussion tonight so that you can determine what you want to do with the money, if anything.
Right.
And you've all identified any number of viable options. But that's why, that's my understanding of why you're having this conversation tonight.
Thank you, Joe. Jeff?
Yeah. And no different than, correct me if I'm wrong, but the local planning committee was appropriated funds to find a consultant. That was under the care, custody, and control of the select board. When the consultant was found through the RFP, then the money was dispersed. Am I close?
Yes, you're absolutely close. I thought you had said that the LPC had been appropriated the funds. There was an appropriating article through the select board. The select board authorized me, and it was used for the benefit of that committee.
Sure.
But that was all through the Aegis of the select board.
So essentially, I see that process happening exactly the same way right now with this $75,000. I would also like to make sure for the record that this is not done in a vacuum. I would like it to be done by way of a collaborative effort between charter bylaw, select board, planning board, if they're going to be involved, town administrator. The only way to get this right, in my opinion, is to have everybody at the table working on the same project and pulling in the same direction. And I'm hopeful that tonight we'll get a little clarity as to how that's going to happen and when we're going to be able to move forward.
Linda, did you want to say a few words?
I almost fell asleep back there standing. Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I would say that the bylaw charter review committee is a bit surprised at this $75,000 being spent on this recodification stuff. It's done every year. It's in the town clerk's budget.
It's not, it's not being spent on it.
Good. I'm just glad that that's being made clear, because that was a complete surprise to even have that conversation here. So I can tell...
If I may, the conversation was that we did agree, in the beginning at least, to take a portion of that money and start the process.
Got it.
We did not say we were giving them 75,000.
Got it.
A portion.
I'm just rising to tell you what the bylaw charter review committee has been doing in public meeting. And so that that's clear, we decided not to wait for you, because we'd hate to be hanging that long. So we have been looking at the charter, chapter by chapter. We have been looking at, each person within the committee has taken a number of chapters. We're going through them in sequential fashion. We are looking at other towns' charters. We have talked to the MMA. So we're not doing this in a vacuum either. And we have been taught, as I said, taught, looking at other charters. We also are looking at the general bylaws as they apply to the charter. And we have found places where there are problems. We expected our meeting on the 10th of December to be looking at a first draft report of what we have been doing. Because clearly, since we were waiting for some decisions to be made, we lost time. So we've gone through about the first four chapters, and we've looked at some of the general bylaws. We're going to give you a little report that says, this is what the things we think should be changed. These are things that we think need some serious discussion. I think it would be a good idea to have a group that would sit and rassle out some of this, maybe a subcommittee of both committees, so that a couple of select board members, a couple of the bylaw charter members can be talking about this stuff. That makes a lot of sense. I'm not going to comment on the charter commission. I will say that even if we had a charter commission, and that passes, et cetera, at the ballot box, that there will still be a need for the charter bylaw review committee, because bylaws, bylaw changes are, by charter, supposed to come to our committee. And that seems to have dropped off the wayside for the past few years. So we're going to make sure that that happens this year. Yes?
I don't agree with the comment that it's gone by the wayside.
It has. We have not gotten them. I've been looking back at, you know, so we have not. So we are working. I'd be certainly happy to have entertained the concept of a little joint subcommittee, in effect, and rassle out some of these things, because there are some things that we're coming up with that are serious considerations.
Can I ask you one question on...
Yes, ma'am.
When you're saying that they haven't been coming to, zoning bylaw changes shouldn't go to...
Nope, but general bylaws should.
Yeah, but not zoning.
Not zoning.
It was the zoning ones that we passed. It was three zoning. It was ADU, solar, vautec, and what was the third one?
Wasn't there an ADU one?
Oh, yeah. It was. It was flood. So those were all zoning.
So it's just that we are looking at the various components. We are not looking at anything in zoning. That's not our purview. So I think that there would be a separate set of slash consultants and the planning board to be looking at that.
So you would agree to two different obvious consultants, one to look at the charter?
I think they're two different people.
Right.
Because somebody who does, you know, operates on brains, isn't the person who operates on shoulders. So, yeah, there are going to be two different people. And everything that I've read about the E-code people, I agree with everything. That's everybody saying, which is, they are not qualified to be doing this level of assessment. They can take the Board of Selectmen and make it Select Board throughout 9,000 pages of documents. They can do that. That's their job.
Right.
But in terms of sitting there and saying, have you ever considered, instead of having a this, you go in this direction? That's an assessment. Those are different people.
Agreed. Yeah.
So the one thing that we have, we did ask for, was it three or four months ago, when we were before this board and having a joint meeting, was, what's the plan? And I still don't see a plan. And hopefully, Madam Chair, one will come out of this shortly, because we do need a plan to go forward. Otherwise, we're going to continue to just tread water and throw bombs. Otherwise, we're going to continue to just tread water and throw bombs. And I don't want to do that either.
Thank you, Lynda.
But thank you, and also thank you, Michael, and for your comments. Jeff, as well.
You too. I didn't get thanked.
All right. Just as a, one, one clarification before we get to the next speaker. We have, we have no money to do zoning with a consultant right now. Fair?
True.
We have no money to have a consultant for zoning right now.
I'm not aware of any through the planning department, correct?
Right. So, the 75,000, just to be clear, is strictly for the charter?
It was limited to charter and general bylaws.
Okay.
Noreen?
Noreen Doan, I'll be really quick, because this is something you've been touching on, so I don't want to hammer it to death, but you know I do.
At least you admit it.
Yeah. We have a couple of separate memories, including mine, from the meeting last summer, which I wasn't even on the committee then, I was one of the audience. I have to say, my memory is the same as Michael's in this case, to the point that I have been stressed since that meeting, because I was so afraid that this board would go ahead and add on a contract to general code slash Ecode. And so, whatever you do, all I'm asking, for the sake of my home life, and so I won't be so stressed, is that if you do anything with Ecode that has to do with the charter or the general bylaws, would you please present a scope of work to the public first? Because I heard the statement of Joe saying, I'd probably go with our current company, not going to quote you, because I don't remember six months ago, but, you know, it was just a very general conversation. And so, please, whatever you're doing, please present us for us with a scope of what's going to be paid for, whether it's 25 grand, 50 grand, or 75. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm more confused when we started this meeting.
I'm not. So-
Shocking.
Can we, can we, can we try and put together a scope of work and task the town administrator with bringing back what resources are available through MMA or through a consultant, so that we can at least speak to somebody and come up with a plan and a scope of work? And I know through many conversations with the town administrator, he has a lot of instances where one doesn't talk to the other. And we just heard that we're about to be presented with a, what they've done so far, and when they're going to present that, it would be nice if the board was able to present something, either from the administrator who works with this on a day-to-day basis, and/or a company that we can use so that we can move this forward.
Joe?
So, I made reference at your last joint meeting with the bylaw charter view as well as tonight, and I know the chair mentioned it as well. So, FOG, as we lovingly call it, form of government, is the MMA-recognized resource for municipalities that are looking to contemplate any changes to their governance, any changes. We had our last meeting in October, and the chair asked me what the town of Harwich was looking for. I was not aware that a request had been made of FOG, because what would normally happen is, when a member of FOG is also a town looking for their services, that member steps away. And I think that's appropriate. However, I can reach out to our chair of FOG and say that the select board, because they only operate through the executive branch, to start. They'll certainly work with anyone that you direct them to, but FOG is waiting to hear if the select board in Harwich want to meet with them. And they would certainly send representatives, either personally or electronically, and it would not be me. So, I think that's a place to start. There's a general questionnaire that we go through, but there's going to be the question of, what are you looking to change? And I don't know that you've had that conversation yet. But you can rely upon them, and that is the cheapest resource, because it's free.
Well, if that's our starting point, I mean, do you see that as, we start with FOG and then-
My recommendation is, you, you talk to FOG, and they will tell you any and all options. It's, it's what we do.
And then-
And in this case, we, with not me.
Right. You would, you would not be part of that process.
Mercifully not.
So, what's the desire of the board? Do you want to start? Have that conversation, start this process off? Okay, so can you make arrangements for us to talk to them? Thank you.
I will note that it's just a perfectly ironic name for the organization, that we're trying to figure out exactly explicitly what we're going to do, and they're named FOG.
Capital F, lowercase o, capital G.
All right, so that will be the action item there to start. And now, we're going to move on to discussion on potential municipal tax bill inserts. I actually brought that, because BikeWays asked if we could work on getting that, the new law, the vulnerability law, out to people, because not many people seem to know about it, so we thought that sending it out, he's putting it in an excise tax bill or in a tax bill, a real estate tax bill, would be a good way to get the information out, but the board needs to vote on that before that can happen. And so, you saw the flyer in your packet. Does anyone have any questions, concerns? Michael?
My concern is ten-wheelers passing each other on a narrow road given four feet.
I couldn't agree more.
Yeah.
But it's a law. Don?
We're going to agree again here. It's not just the ten-wheelers either. Having taught Drivers Ed for over a decade, I'm not sure how you can do that on our roads, given four feet, without crossing a double yellow line in order to do it. You've got to pick your poison at that point. They, it's, it is a new law. It's like wipers on, lights on, that I'm not sure everybody knows about either, but to be able to actually implement that in a rural area, in a rural setting, I don't, I mean, Great Western Road comes to mind. I'm not sure how you even do this.
No, and that's not, I mean, obviously, it's not on us to do it, it's the law. So, I'm just, this is about putting the insert in an upcoming either excise tax bill or real estate tax bill, and the, and it all can be done, it's all been vetted, but this board needs to vote on taking that action.
Will we put it in the bill?
Yes, that's the question.
Second for discussion, what's the cost?
I don't believe there is a cost. I think it's included.
I believe the finance director may be coming up to join this conversation. If you notice in the agenda, the only way that something goes in a tax bill is if a board votes it in accordance with Chapter 60, Section 3A. However, that statute also indicates that the insert cannot cause the postage number to go up.
Okay.
So, it's meant to be this quality, I don't know if you have the same thing, sorry.
You just have the picture.
But it's, yeah, it's thin quality paper that would go in, because it cannot change the postage.
So, so that's where-
And I believe, and this is where I'd ask, I rely upon the finance director, I believe it's only property tax bills, according to the statute.
Only property tax.
So, even though we might want to do it for those folks that have personal property or something else, I believe the statute only gets to property tax bills.
Okay.
So, the only cost is the cost of the flyer?
Correct.
And we, we don't have to, um-
I thought that was something that somebody done.
Yeah, we, we, there are flyers. Those are, those are, BikeWays got those from the state, I believe, so I don't think we don't have to print anything. We're just going to put it in, and you're saying the only thing you can't do is cost, you know, 50 cents if we, our bills normally cost 49.
Correct.
Yeah. Is Kathleen coming up?
I don't think she's available right now.
Oh, okay, okay. So, we can bring it back next week.
I'd recommend that.
We'll just bring it back next week.
I withdraw my motion.
Yeah.
I withdraw my second.
Thank you. So, we'll bring that back next week, and get that clarification, that it doesn't increase the cost. Okay, and we already did E under new business, so we'll go forward with F.
I move that we approve alcoholic beverages control commission seasonal population form. Will we keep rolling this?
Uh, no, we have to get it.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Seasonal population is 35,000.
Yeah, that's where I was looking for it.
35,000.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I move that we approve Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15, off-premise annual liquor license renewal for A.J. Luke's of Harwich Incorporated, 224 Route 28.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I move that we approve the following Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 12, on-premise annual liquor license. Ashwood Food Service Incorporated, DBA Jake Rooney's, 119 Brooks Road, and Beachlight LLC, DBA Seal Pub, 703 Main Street.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I move that we approve the following 2024 common viculers license renewals. Alexander the Great, DBA Alessis House of Pizza, 181 Route 137. Ashwood Food Service Incorporated, DBA Jake Rooney's, 119 Brook Road. Beachlight LLC, DBA Seal Pub and Cafe, 703 Main Street. Blue Stripe LLC, DBA Cape Sea Grill, 31 C Street. BLM Restaurant Group, DBA Lanyard Bar and Grill, 429 Route 28. Dent Donuts LLC, DBA Dunkin' Donuts, 481 Route 28. Dent Donuts LLC, DBA Dunkin' Donuts, 175 Route 137. Ember Pizza, Inc., DBA Ember Cold Fired Pizza and Wings, 600 Route 28. Imperos Holdings LLC, DBA George's Pizza House, 564 Route 28. 400 East Incorporated, did you want me to stop? Sorry. 400 East, Inc., DBA 400 East, 1421 Orleans Road. Morning Star Restaurant, Inc., DBA Villaroma, 278 Route 28. Red River Barbecue LLC, DBA Red River Barbecue, 787 Route 28. Round Cove Resort Owner LLC, DBA Waquasit Resort and Golf Club, 2173 Route 28. Ruggies Incorporated, DBA Ruggies Restaurant, 707 Main Street. Scrobano's, Inc., DBA Scrobano's Italian Market, 302 Route 28. Zack Incorporated, DBA Castaways, 986 Route 28. Zhao Garden Incorporated, DBA Chez Juan Delight, 1421 Orleans Road, and I'm hungry.
Second.
You could do school cancellations.
Moved in seconded, any, for any discussion? Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just have a question. Is, there a substantive difference between your sit-down and non-sit-down? Because I noticed you've got two of the Dunkin' Donuts here, but the third one, that's probably the most popular in the town, is the one that was at Reservy's Gas Station, and they do prepare food. Have they, are they subject to this, and, or is it only when you're sitting in premises? And if they are subject to this, has anybody actually applied for anything?
Sounds like follow-up for the town administrator.
Do we know the location that you're talking about?
Yeah, it's Reservy's Gas Station on 137.
It's 109, I think it's 109 Route 137. I only know that because I have the app.
How many donuts did you get again?
Oh, because they have Dunkin' Donuts in there.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But they have the same range of services. You can cook things.
Yeah, I don't know why it's not on here. The other ones, because like, as you pointed out, the other ones in Harwich.
I mean, I'm fine approving this, I just was wondering why they're missing.
So, where's that one?
Okay.
So, well, Joe, will you follow up with Danielle on that?
Yep.
So, moved in seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. 4-0.
I move that we approve the following 2024 lodging or inholders license renewals. Barnaby Inn, 36 Route 28. Braddock Incorporated, DBA Winstead Inn, Beach and Beach Resort, 114 and 114 through 118 Parallel Street. Braddock Incorporated, DBA Winstead Inn and Beach Resort, 4 Braddock Street. Sands Hospitality Incorporated, DBA The Platinum Pebble Boutique Inn, 186 Belmont Road. Sisamp Incorporated, DBA The Turn Inn, 91 Chase Street, and Round Cove Resort Owner LLC, DBA Waquasit Resort and Golf Club, 2173 Route 28.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I move that we approve the following Class IV Auto Repair License Renewals. Dave's Garage, 910 Route 28. Nick and Claudine Enterprises LLC, DBA West Harwich, Save On Gas 4, Route 28. Stevens Auto Repair, DBA Stevens Auto, 216 Main Street.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I move that we approve Julie's-
Move it along.
I move that we approve a Class 1 Agent and Seller's Auto License Renewal for Harwich Port Boatyard, 4 Harbor Road.
Second.
Moved in second.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Right, there you go.
Getting punchy here.
I move that we approve the two, the following 2024 weekly, weekday and Sunday entertainment license renewals.
Before you do that-
I'll do these one at a time.
Madam Chair, if I could?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, no, I'm choking here. I believe you have this document as well.
Oh, yes, we do.
I would just urge you to have that available.
Yeah.
The large print room?
This one, yeah.
The large print pack?
Yeah.
Okay, one at a time. I move that we approve the following 2024 weekday and Sunday entertainment license renewals. First, Ashwood Food Service Incorporated, DBA Jake Rooney's, 119 Brooks Road. Weekday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. inside. Jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music amplification, dancing by live performers, and trivia.
Second.
Yeah, but hold on.
Oh, you want the Sunday, too?
Sunday, 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. They will have jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music amplification, dancing by live performers.
Second.
So, can I just ask you, though, in the beginning there, it says 11, right? 11:00 a.m.? And last year, it was 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Is that right? Is that the only difference? Yeah, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. during the week. Weekday, inside, they had 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Am I reading the right one?
Which one are you reading, Madam Chair?
Jake Rooney's? Oh, 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m.
To 12:00 a.m.
I can't even read.
That's, that was weekday, inside. It was 6 at night to 12:00 a.m.
Yep.
And now, they're asking, it's the-
Now, they're asking for 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Yeah, right? So, that's a difference.
So, they've gone earlier and earlier on both.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Sooner closing, but off.
Then weekday outside, or is that, is that right? There isn't any.
They're inside only.
Yeah, so why does it say that?
And the only change is exactly what you said. They're going earlier.
6:00 p.m. inside.
They're asking for earlier.
And they're knocking off earlier.
I have no problem with it. Inside venue, and they need this license if they're going to have a TV or background music. So, they're covering themselves for hours open.
Yeah, okay.
And I would agree, the only question as a new guy, is, is Sundays included in this spreadsheet that we have? Or are they asking now for Sunday?
Yes, it is. Yeah, no, they're, they had Sunday.
Did they?
They had Sunday, and I misread the weekday outside, so I'm fine with 11, if you guys are fine with 11.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, just trying to-
So, that was my motion for one.
Okay. Was it seconded?
It was.
Hold on a second here. Are we really looking at Jake Rooney's from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m.? That's a really long overnighter.
Weekdays, that's, see, I did that, too, Don. That's not right. It's, it's N.A. on the outside. I did the same thing.
Yeah, but I'm moving across.
It's above that. N.A., weekday outside. Well, you just read twelve p.m. to ten a.m., which is...
That's why staff told me to bring this.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, what? No, if you...
Yeah.
Go across.
If you scroll down, you'll see it. Well, we get to the next line, though.
But there is a ten a.m. It should be ten p.m.
That's an all-miter, though.
Yeah, that should be ten p.m.
Well, I guess on this one, the bottom line is indoor entertainment, eleven a.m. to eleven p.m., weekday, and Sunday, six p.m. to eight-thirty p.m. That's what we're being asked to approve.
Yeah.
And that's inside only. And I still have no problem with it.
And I'm just making the point that it was different than last year.
Yes.
That's why Danielle gave us this.
Those two, two that were different.
Right.
That one and Amber.
Yep.
So...
There was a noise emanating from go-to-meeting. I'm not sure if...
Oh, is anybody on go-to-meeting that wants to speak to this? Hearing nobody. I think then we're good. So we've got a, we've got a second, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So moved in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I move that we approve the following twenty-twenty-four weekday and Sunday entertainment license renewals for Beachlight LLC, D.B.A. Sail Pub Cafe, seven-oh-three Main Street. Weekday, six a.m. to twelve a.m. inside. Six p.m. to nine p.m. outside, Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. Inside, jukebox, radio, television. Outside, acoustic guitar and unamplified singing.
Second.
And Sunday...
Oh, second.
From six a.m. to twelve a.m. inside, recorded music, television, radio, and background music. And six p.m. to ten p.m. only acoustic, unamplified live music and karaoke.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Don?
Yeah, the Sunday part was a little disturbing. They're right next to a church parking lot.
I don't believe that's a change from last year.
No, it's just because, like, it's the whole radio thing indoor, right?
Six a.m.?
Yeah.
Yeah, they had it last year.
They had it, six a.m., because they come in, they start opening the place, they put the radio on.
They serve breakfast.
Yeah, and they're just looking for, making sure they're not breaking any rules.
Okay.
All right. So moved in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four-zero?
Four-zero. And that was, now you're going to three, Blue Stripe.
Yep. I move that we approve the following twenty-twenty-four weekday and Sunday entertainment license for Blue Stripe LLC, D.B.A. Cape Seagirl, thirty-one C Street. Weekday, four p.m. to twelve a.m. inside, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers. And Sunday, four p.m. to twelve a.m. inside, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I move that we approve the following twenty-twenty-four weekday and Sunday entertainment license renewals for B.L.M. Restaurant Group, D.B.A. Lanyard Bar and Grill. Four-twenty-nine Route twenty-eight. Weekday, four p.m. to eleven p.m. inside, jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers. Four p.m. to ten p.m. outside, on the weekdays, jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers. Sundays, four p.m. to eleven p.m. inside, jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers. And four p.m. to ten p.m. outside, jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers.
Second.
Moved in seconded, oh, Don?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say this for the public certification, and Jeff wasn't here either. There's a substantive difference between the, the location that the lanyard has and other places, because we were, we've been looking for several years about the disturbance for the surrounding area. There is no real surrounding area with the, the lanyard. So for everybody who's wondering, because we're going to have this similar discussion in a few minutes, there was a rationale for why they're different. It's, it has to do with them being off on their own, and they're pretty isolated in terms of their impact on anyone.
My only comment would be maybe for licensing Danielle to check with them, because they put four p.m. down.
Yeah.
Last year was one p.m. I know they served lunch, and I know a big part of this is because people technically need a license from us to turn a TV on at lunchtime. So maybe we check on whether they meant four, voted as it is, amend it next week if they want to change it, but assuming they probably want the same as they had last year.
Jeff wants to see the live dancing performers.
Which I see, yeah, so Michael, I see here, one p.m. to one a.m. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I don't mind him going backwards on the front side.
Yeah.
I just think they need to cover themselves for lunch.
I move that we approve the following twenty-twenty-four...
We didn't vote on that, did we?
No, no, no. That was moved in seconded, then, so no further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I move that we approve the following twenty-twenty-four weekday and Sunday entertainment license renewal. Amber Pizza Incorporated, D.B.A. Amber Coal Fired Pizza and Wings, six-hundred Route twenty-eight. Weekday, ten a.m. to twelve a.m. inside, jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers. Ten a.m. to ten p.m. outside, jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers. Sunday, ten a.m. to twelve a.m. inside, jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers. And ten a.m. to ten p.m. outside, jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers.
Second for discussion.
Moved in seconded, so who wants to speak first? Michael, Don, did you have something?
Yeah, I mean, this is pretty much my issue through the years. Where they are, what we've been through, and how we were able to resolve it, was entirely contingent upon the outside portion of this being acoustic entertainment and not amplified. And I am not willing to change my mind on that, because they, they're pretty close to a lot of residences. We, we seem to be able to have resolved the situation. It's not the only place in the entire world that I, as a matter of fact, it's not, there are other towns that do this now with just unamplified acoustic entertainment. So if, I'd buy into voting for this if it had the outside portion of it as acoustic, but I can't support it being amplified.
Yeah, and on that note, though, there's also pushing back the time, the start time, to ten a.m. versus eleven on the inside. It's eleven a.m. to twelve a.m. inside last year. It was eleven a.m. to ten p.m. on weekday outside, not amplified. And then it was, you know, acoustic only, and then it was, this says one p.m. to twelve a.m. Sunday inside, which this is back again to ten a.m. I mean, I would prefer to stick to the eleven o'clock, the way we've had it, and make no changes in, in regard to the applications.
Madam Chair, can we actually change what they're asking for? Or do we have to get, turn it down and have them reapply for the times and the acoustic entertainment?
You have in your packet the current license practice. You could approve that separate from what they're requesting.
Okay.
And I have that if you want me to read it, if that helps, if anything.
Yeah.
I would, yeah.
Yes.
So on the license, that reads, "Inholders, common vigilers, and other," I can't say the word, "other keepers of restaurants and other establishments." Description of amusements to be conducted. Inside, recorded slash live music, amplification, dancing by live performers. Outside, acoustic music only, no amplification to be used outside, to be conducted on the weekdays between the hours of eleven a.m. to ten p.m. outside. Monday to Saturdays, eleven a.m. to twelve a.m. inside. And then for Sundays, that license, this is for public entertainment on Sundays. Sundays, one p.m. to twelve a.m. is inside, recorded, or live music, amplification, dancing by live performers. Sundays, one p.m. to ten p.m. outside, acoustic music only, no amplification. So you could vote to approve what was licensed in the previous year.
Okay.
Still trying to read this.
Or you could adopt their request.
You'd have to remove the motion to even...
Right.
I'll remove my second.
So the only difference is that they're looking on here, on the new, on the agenda, it's starting at ten a.m. instead of eleven?
Correct.
And they were looking for, just sorry, I'm going back again on the, okay, weekday, inside, ten a.m., ten a.m. to ten p.m. outside, whereas it was eleven. I think we need to stick with that, and it shouldn't be amplified. We didn't give amplification.
I was just going to make a motion that we do it under the same terms and conditions as the prior year's license.
I would.
Yeah, just a question. The inside moving from eleven a.m. to starting at ten a.m. That's not something the board would consider, except...
I would.
You would or wouldn't?
I would.
I would, too. I mean, they're in business, they're probably...
I'm willing to modify the motion to include that time change.
Well, this is my, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I don't have a problem inside.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're not changing anything outside, because we've had, we finally got to a good place, and I think that it's been working. So I don't want to change any hours outside. I'm okay with the ten a.m. inside.
So that, my next question was, are we able to piece this out and make a new motion?
Yes.
Okay. That was my other question. And, but you're not okay, if I'm hearing you, I understand the amplification staying, it's staying acoustic.
Right.
But you're not in favor of allowing them to begin, because of understanding, if they need permission to turn on a TV outside...
Well...
I'm, I'm just trying to understand the landscape here.
Yeah, no, I, I don't...
Because I want to vote the way...
I don't think they have TVs outside, first of all. They don't?
I believe they do underneath their little bar.
Okay.
And above their front door.
Let Michael make the motion, and I withdraw mine.
Well, I'm just wondering if, I, I don't want to prohibit a partner in business in our town from turning on a television if people are there eating Meltaways or whatever they're making, the, the new style, Meltaway, I should say. So, yeah, that, I'm, I'm asking the question because I, I don't know.
So again, if they have TVs outside, I don't have a problem with them turning on a TV, but I don't, I'm not looking to allow outdoor music starting at ten a.m. if that's what results from here, and that's what I would be afraid of.
That's the problem, is how you parse this.
Well, that's, that was the genesis of my question, is can you piece it out, or...
I can make a motion.
Okay.
If you agree, we'll vote for it.
That's how it works, generally.
Those are fair conditions.
The only question I have is related to, is related to Sunday outside. Sunday outside, last year's license was one p.m.
Right.
And they're asking for ten. And I, I would agree.
And the amplification.
I would agree on it. The only, the only thing is, yeah, that's out. So, out of my motion, at least. Do we want to, instead of ten on a Sunday, I mean, they open for lunch. If there's a football game or something, they want to watch it outside, or play light background music, they still have to comply with noise by law. How does going earlier on a Sunday than one o'clock suit the board? I, I, I think one o'clock is late. You miss the early lunch.
London.
So I'm thinking eleven o'clock on the outdoor. All right, so here's where I'm going. I move that we approve Amber Pizza, Inc., D.B.A. Amber Coal Fired Pizza and Wings, six-hundred Route twenty-eight. Weekday entertainment, ten a.m. to twelve a.m. inside, jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers. Eleven a.m. to ten p.m. outside, acoustic only. Ju, acoustic, so let me get into that. Sorry, I'm going to start with eleven a.m. to ten p.m. outside, jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music, acoustic only, dancing by live performers.
That would be a conflict.
Go ahead.
If, if you have amplified music, it's electronic, so you'd have to have the live music part of it, be unamplified acoustic.
Okay, live and recorded music, acoustic only, dancing by live performers. Joe, you follow me on this?
Kind of.
You want me to start from scratch?
No. You're working on outside. You did eleven a.m. to ten p.m. And the listings there are jukebox, radio, television, live or recorded music.
Or, or live acoustic only.
Outdoor.
Scratching recorded music, or?
Nope, I would do that as a separate, separate, do recorded music, dancing by live performers.
What are we doing with the word amplification?
Taking it out.
He's saying acoustic only, or...
He's basically saying if they want recorded music, it could be radio, but not amplified out.
Jukebox, radio, television, live music, acoustic only.
And then recorded.
Ramo, recorded music, dancing by live performers.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, and then to extend, it would be Sunday, ten a.m. to twelve a.m. inside, jukebox, radio, television, live or recorded music with amplification, dancing by live performers. And then it would be eleven a.m. to ten p.m. outside, this is Sunday.
Same thing, is it?
Yep, eleven a.m. to ten p.m. outside, jukebox, radio, television, live, live music, no, live music.
Music acoustic only.
Acoustic only, recorded music, dancing by live performers.
Second.
Sorry. If anyone can translate that.
Moved, moved in seconded.
We understood what you were doing.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I move that we approve the following twenty-twenty-four weekday and Sunday entertainment license renewal, four-hundred East, Inc., D.B.A. four-hundred East, fourteen-twenty-one Orleans Road. Weekday, five p.m. to ten p.m. inside, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers. Sunday, four p.m. to ten p.m. inside, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I also move that we approve Morning Star Restaurant Incorporated, D.B.A. Villaroma, two-seventy-eight Route twenty-eight. Weekday, four-thirty p.m.
For now.
To eleven p.m. inside, jukebox, radio, television. Sunday, four-thirty p.m. to eleven p.m. inside, jukebox, radio, television.
So just a note on here, this is four-thirty, and they were four o'clock, so I just want to point that out. We can vote the four-thirty, and then if, but they may want to change it back.
I think you can proceed as listed on the agenda.
Okay, okay. So did anyone second that?
Second.
Don seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I also move that we approve Red River BBQ LLC, D.B.A. Red River BBQ, seven-eight-seven Route twenty-eight. Weekday, five p.m. to nine p.m. inside, jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers. And on Sunday, five p.m. to nine p.m. inside, jukebox, radio, television, live recorded music, amplification, dancing by performers.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I also move that we approve Round Cove Resort Owner LLC, DBA Waquasit Resort and Golf Club, twenty one seventy three Route twenty eight. Weekday, twelve PM to twelve AM inside. Live recorded music, amplification, dining, dancing by live performers and patrons. Twelve PM to ten PM outside. Live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers and patrons. Sunday, twelve PM to twelve AM inside. Live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers and patrons. And twelve PM to ten PM outside. Live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers and patrons.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Town administrators report.
So I'm only doing this because you have copious amount of licenses to sign, which are now being circulated. Just one contract to announce, but it's a great one. A contract for additional voting related equipment. So the town has contracted with LHS Associates Incorporated and the dollar amount of thirty seven thousand, six hundred dollars. And what this is, is a high speed tabulator, six additional poll pads and an upgrade of software for all poll pads. Some great technology that's used not only at town elections, but I believe the poll pads are also at town meetings. And so we're thrilled to have that contract with LHS. They are a sole source provider. But this was still done as a request for proposals. And if I'm reading this correctly, the funding comes through the twenty twenty two annual town meeting, Article twenty. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Joe. Board members, Don?
Well, it was said before, but it was a really nice, Jeff was there and saw you leaving the tree lighting at Harwich Port. Really, really nice. It was just something that warmed your heart that Harwich is still doing something like that and as a, as a community together and all the parents were really proud of their kids.
Thank you, Don. Jeff?
Yeah, and to add on to Don's point, not, not a week goes by in Harwich where I don't find myself just running into some extraordinary people. And Rebecca Riley, the lead for the Harwich Elementary School Choir, was simply extraordinary. As were all the, all the little ones who sang at the tree lighting. It was simply incredible. So thank you to Rebecca and all the kids who did such a fine job starting off our holiday season.
Thank you, Jeff. Michael?
This one that I missed last week and it was a thank you to Brax Lanning, Jeff Gomes and Tad Peavy. Thanksgiving, they served for free over sixteen hundred meals.
Wow.
So special thanks to Brax Lanning, Jeff Gomes and Tad Peavy. Amazing what they do for this community.
And Jeff was at the lighting.
Thank you. I would re, I would echo the comments about all that Cindy was able to put on for this past weekend, which was so much. And on every single day, there were lots of happenings. One of the warmest moments for me was Harwich Port as the fire truck went down the street. The kids going crazy screaming, oh my God, that's Santa. And just, I said to my husband, like, that is like the purest of pure. So what a, what a great weekend for Harwich and thank you to Cindy for all of her hard work.
Shouldn't do adjourned?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.